Call to order then.
Call to order the meeting for, what is today? The May 1st, 2024 work, work meeting for the new comp plan.
Yes, thank you. And we don't have a film crew with us, but we are trying to record this meeting using the audio and the video capabilities that are built into the room. I think these mics pick up pretty well, but if you can enunciate, that's, that's even better as, as we go through our discussion today. Thank you for joining us and making accommodations in your schedule for these extra meetings. I think it'll be beneficial for us to really, you know, deep dive and get into comp plan subjects without the, the extra load workload of, of public hearings. So we appreciate you making the time, Planning Commission. With us today, we have Catherine Redfern and Carolyn Venturvy with the Berkeley Group. They are going to walk through the slides which cover, you know, the kind of the basic, the building blocks, if you will, of the plan, which is community engagement, chapter one, and our community profile. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it over to them.
Great. Well, thank you all, and thank you all for being here. This is the first in a series of work sessions that we will have with you all, Planning Commission, as we're entering the drafting phase for the comprehensive plan update. And like Rachel said, today is really about building blocks. It's about covering what we heard through public engagement, what we saw through the community profile, both of those documents you all should have received in your meeting packets, and then also looking briefly at, at chapter one, the first chapter of the comprehensive plan. So the agenda for today, introductions, check, we did that. We'll cover where we are in the update process, where we've been, where we're headed, and then most of our time this afternoon will be spent discussing key themes and planning needs. So those key themes that we identified again through the public engagement process and through the, the community profile. And then we'll talk about next steps. So next meetings coming up, where we're going from here. So where are we in the update process? We just finished phase one of what is a three-phase update process. Since we last saw you all in August, you will call, we kicked off August 31st with Planning Commission and the EDA. Since that kickoff meeting, we've completed the community profile, which is essentially existing conditions and baseline information for the comp plan update. We also presented at the city council retreat in December of 2023, and then followed it up with some interviews with city council members. The project website, LynchburgTogether.com, went officially live probably mid-fall of last year, and will stay live throughout the plan update process. This is where the public survey was made available, is where, as we get into drafting, that draft chapters will be made available, and there'll be an online comment form where members of the public can read a chapter and then enter in a comment. So we'll be collecting comments throughout the drafting process, not just, not just at the end. The project website has also an interactive map and the I Love Lynchburg entry, which both are still active, is that correct?
Yes.
So both of those, the interactive map and the I Love Lynchburg exercise, they will also remain active throughout the, the duration of the plan update process. Public survey went live October 15th of 2023, and we closed it March 1st. This is where a lot of the information in the public engagement summary that you received, a lot of that information came from the public survey. There's some high-level takeaways, but then also a question-by-question printout of information received from that survey. We conducted four public workshops, two in November and two of December of last year, and that's where we invited the community at large to come together, to work with us, to talk about strengths, opportunities, challenges for the city. And then we conducted eight focus groups in March and April of this year. And this is where we brought together members of various industries throughout the community, organizations, stakeholders, key experts, really take a deep dive on, on various topics. And the public engagement summary that you have in your meeting packet summarizes each of these public engagement actions, each of these items in detail, and then also provides a high-level overview of key takeaways from, from the engagement process. With the conclusion of the focus groups, we are moving into phase two, which is the drafting phase. And this graphic always makes me chuckle a little bit because it makes it look like it's the shortest phase of the project, when in fact it is not. We will have five work sessions with you all going through the first quarter of 2025, where we are taking deep dives on all of the topics that will be addressed throughout the comprehensive plan. And again, like I said, those drafts, as after we workshop them together, will be posted on the project website for public review. When the plan is finalized, it will then enter phase three, the review and refinement phase, where we present it to the public, present it to VDOT, make any edits, and then usher it through the public hearing and adoption phase. Are there questions about schedule, process, where we've been, where we're going?
Where's that website at?
LynchburgTogether.com. Any other questions about schedule? So I mentioned that we have five work sessions scoped with the Planning Commission through the drafting phase. The first of these is today, and then they are every other month through January, and those dates are on the screen. At each of those work sessions, like I said, we'll be taking a deep dive on at least two of the topics or planned chapters that are included in the comprehensive plan. And just like at this work session, you'll receive draft materials in advance, and then we'll come together as a group. We will refine those, we'll discuss them, we'll prioritize objectives, and finalize the draft so that it can be made available for public review. This is the loose schedule. We're definitely doing housing and economic development at the July 11th meeting, and then most likely this is the structure, the topics that we'll be addressing at the, at the subsequent meetings.
So are we working separately from city council throughout this whole process?
Yeah, that's great. Let me, let me go back one slide. So these work sessions, yes, are just with you all, with Planning Commission. We interviewed city council and presented that retreat in December, and then at the very end, you'll see final review work session with Planning Commission and city council. After it's gone through the public review phase, and after we've gotten comments back from VDOT, we'll sit down the both city council and you, Planning Commission, to say, okay, this is the draft plan, this is what the public had to say, this is what VDOT had to say, and then get direction from you all how to edit the plan before it goes to the public hearing and adoption process.
Is that a collaborative session, or is that?
Yes, that is a joint work session. And that's a ways in the future. We're probably talking this time next year, if, if not later. All right. Other questions about schedule and work sessions? So the next slide covers the proposed plan outline, the structure for the comprehensive plan, and those items highlighted in blue are those items that you either received, excuse me, in your meeting packet, or we'll be discussing with you all today. The proposed structure of the plan includes six chapters, as well as the appendices, and you'll see the community engagement summary and the community profile are included in the appendix of the document. There are three policy chapters, each with two planning elements grouped under them, and they are grouped and organized in this way because we felt these were the topics that had some overlap, overlapping content, overlapping objectives. And the idea behind structuring the plan this way was really to create a more streamlined, user-friendly, easy-to-approach plan, where the parts can talk to each other and be more efficient for staff and for yourselves to use. The three planning, or sorry, policy chapters are, first, the define and protect community form. This chapter addresses growth and community character, so this is where the conceptual future land use map will live, your land use framework. We'll talk about historic preservation here, and then housing and neighborhoods, so really the built fabric of the city of Lynchburg. Chapter four, creating more connected community framework, addresses mobility and connectivity, so both vehicular and alternative transportation, and then infrastructure and public facilities. So that framework, those are the backbone of, of the city. And then chapter five, improving community function. These are the economic and social elements of, that go into making any, any place, really. So we'll address economic development and investment, and then environmental and community health. So we'll talk about parks and rec, access to parks and rec for healthy, active communities. We'll talk about community health and safety in general, as well as schools and, and economic development. Comments on the structure, oh, before I go there. Chapter six is the implementation chapter. This is, this is really where the rubber hits the road. This is the implementation matrix, where all of the strategies and projects from the policy chapters come together basically in a work plan. So we say, these are the projects we identified throughout the planning process. This is the timeframe, this is who's going to do them, these are the partners and the resources to get, to get them done.
I'm curious, yeah, curiously, on chapter five, I heard you mention safety. That, can you, can you expand on that just ever so slightly as to what that might mean within regards to the outline here and the?
Sure, sure, absolutely. And these are still in development, so we haven't drafted this chapter yet, so what it means exactly is, could definitely change. But we're, you know, talking about community health, safety, and wellness. We know crime is a, is a, an issue that we've heard throughout the public engagement process, crime and, and safety within the community. So what can we do, we're addressing, through this comprehensive plan, to address those issues?
I have a question too about chapter five. I think you said parks and rec is in that. But then I look at infrastructure and connectivity, and I wonder if, um, do we separate things like trails out? Because I feel like-
That's a great point, yeah.
Those kind of things are really, there are parks and rec, but they're actually really a key component to the community. Where parks are, a lot of people even, a lot of politicians, they're a nicety, but I don't feel like connectivity is just a nicety. I think it's something that should be front and center.
Yeah, and that's a valid point. We had that conversation internally, you know. Trails are a great way to connect people, they're a great alternative, alternative transportation network, so where, where does that live? And we're open to, to discussing where you all feel it best fits for the city. And we don't even have to decide today, it can be something that evolves as the, as the plan is developed.
So it's flexible. Great comment.
Yeah, actually, that's interesting. So it, it kind of led with who owns it before it led with the functionality of it.
Right, but that's, well, I think it's always been housed there. I think that's the thing, but.
That's a good point, that was a good point.
And there, there'll be a lot of overlap between many of these chapters, and there may be sections where we're talking about it in both places, and making cross-references and saying, you know, for a more environmental aspect, it'll go here, but for a transportation aspect, we'll address it in that chapter. So it'll definitely come up multiple times throughout this, but good, good point.
Yeah, and, yeah, that point very well taken. I, part of what I like about structuring the plan this way is you don't just have a parks and rec chapter where it's like sitting there, and this is parks and rec. It's really integrated into everything we're talking about. So the strategies and the objectives become a little bit more comprehensive in how they're addressed throughout the city. That's the hope at least. Other comments, thoughts on plan structure? So like I said, those items in blue are the, the items that you received in your meeting packet and that we are going to discuss today. I really want to discuss the community profile and the public engagement summary in the context of the key themes that we've, we've put together, but I did want to give you all an opportunity, if you had any specific questions or edits to these documents, particularly chapter one, for us to discuss those before we get into a more high-level conversation. So chapter one, what you see on the screen, this is the first chapter of the plan, and it really establishes the legal parameters for your comprehensive plan, talks about your authority to adopt and implement the plan, planning jurisdiction, and the relationship to other plans and ordinances that the city, city uses. It also outlines the process by which the plan is updated or will, will be updated. This chapter really checks the boxes for compliance with state code and planning, planning best practices. If there are questions or edits, comments on this chapter, we can, we can take those now. I will say things like typographical editorial stuff, those are best in writing to Rachel. Spend our time, spend our time talking about more substantive things in our, in our work sessions.
I know it mentions or makes a reference to the neighborhood plans. Are those, where do those fit in from a legal comp plan standpoint? Are they just future, what we want to do? I mean, do they fall under the umbrella of the comp plan that we want to, we want to implement this neighborhood plan? Because most of the ones we've discussed, we don't have the funding for, we don't have...
Well, when, when Planning Commission makes a recommendation, you're making a recommendation to council on whether to adopt that plan as part of our comprehensive plan. It's like an appendage, kind of a sub-plan, but it, it is considered for us part of our comp plan.
Okay. But today's just executive flyover.
Yeah. Yep. Executive flyover, I like that.
And even though, even though, and I don't want to get off topic, but you make a good point, lots of times we do have plans, and there's no funding mechanism in place at the time of adoption, but we do always try to identify potential funding streams for those. And the plans themselves actually help us acquire those funding, funding mechanisms because, you know, if we have an adopted document that says, there's a, there's a need, we heard it, we've, we've committed to it by adopting the plan, then that shows a, a nonprofit, or a federal grant program, or whoever, that this is something that the community has already decided that its needs. So they don't give money unless, unless the community has put in the legwork ahead of time just to show that they need it, so.
Will this be the, I feel like the answer's no, but the, I see a list of other plans, studies, and initiatives, but like, the business improvement district as an example. Would something like that exist within any of this work?
It is certainly something that we will address in the economic development and investment chapter.
So is kind of the philosophy driving these different sections, different chapters, driven by the input of the respective stakeholders in those categories, or is it driven by an overall view of community planning? Or what's kind of underlying this, I guess, is where we're going?
D, all of the above. Yeah, I mean, at, at the end of the day, this is, as Planning Commission, this is your plan, and you are the drivers of the plan. We had eight focus groups. We also had four public workshops and a survey, and we've had conversations with staff, you know, interviews with city, city department heads, interviews with city council, and work sessions with you all. So all of that's going to play a role in how these, how these chapters come together. The topics themselves, some of that is set by state codes, so land use, housing, transportation, things that we have to address in the comprehensive plan. Other things are just kind of best practice, like what's worked well in other communities, but, you know, we've structured this plan a little bit differently than we've structured any other plan we've, we've worked on. So we have some leeway to massage, so to speak.
So the focus groups, were they just like neighborhood groups, or were there some, there were some business, downtown business groups?
Yeah.
So there were different kinds of groups that were looking at this, too. It wasn't just like?
There were, there, there's a list of all the, the focus groups that we talked to in the public engagement summary, and they were, they were topical groups. So there was a, a transportation and connectivity group, there was an economic development group, an education workforce group, so forth, and so on.
Professionals.
Professionals, yeah. And organizations and nontopics. Yeah, and we worked with Rachel, we worked with Rachel to identify those people, we worked with Marjette to identify organizations that participated in that. I think we had over 40 different organizations and businesses participate in those focus groups. But the idea is you bring them together as, not as individual citizens, but as, you know, as a, as leaders in a particular industry or field to get perspective from an organizational standpoint, rather than the individual citizen who's living in a neighborhood or has some other interest in mind.
And we did have some of those, too.
We did. They came, they, we had folks show up to the public workshops, and then the survey, of course, was open to anyone and everyone.
Did you find any or a lot or moderate amount of overlap in the people whose faces showed up at some of these focus groups? Or was it kind of different?
The focus groups were mostly different folks. We did have some overlap just because they're people that wear multiple hats.
I'm going somewhere with this.
I can ramble, but I can see that. And I think some of those folks showed up to, to workshops as well. Can almost say for certain that they probably filled out a survey, people who showed up to focus groups also filled out surveys. All right, other, other questions? Comments on chapter one, or logistical questions, clarifying questions about public engagement, about the community profile, any? We'll have time to, you know, answer detailed data questions, but anything that you think might help clarify where we're going from here, feel free to ask. All right. Oh, and I did neglect to say that this is not your last opportunity to comment on these documents. This is not like you show up and then you're not allowed to talk about them ever again. We usually give it a week after each of the work sessions to give any kind of initial, final initial comments. And then, of course, we come back together at the end of the process to look at the plan as a whole, and so we can refine from there once we see how all the chapters fit together.
And that's just on what we're covering today, right? Not on the entire?
Yeah, just on, yeah, just on what we're covering today. And we break it up into these bits and pieces where we're doing, you know, this topic at this work session and this topic at that work session, because otherwise it's way, way too much. We got, they're little bite-sized pieces. All right, well, let's move on to talking about some key themes. So, like I said, we, we pulled out key themes from what we heard through public engagement, through the public engagement summary, and what we saw in the existing conditions data, the demographics and other data that we pulled, which is included in the community profile. For the purposes of this conversation, we've organized it basically around the proposed plan structure, around these, these three chapters and their subsections. And what we, what you'll see is we have slides where we've highlighted three or four of the key themes that, for each of these, that we, that we saw. But we're not presenting these as the end-all, be-all. It's really, we're hoping that this is a conversation with you all, the start of a conversation. Do you agree, disagree? Did you see something else in the data? Or is there something that didn't come up at all that we need to be considering? The idea behind this conversation is we really, we need that foundation, we need that foundation so we can start drafting, drafting the chapters. Need some, some buy-in and some consensus on what these themes are, so as we're, as we're drafting, we're heading in the direction that, that makes the most sense. Does that make sense? All right. So the first of these is the community form, growth and character. And the, I think the most important data point metric in all of this data is the fact that Lynchburg's population is projected to increase by 18% by 2050. So from about 80,000 to over 90, 30 plus to 94,000. And that has implications for all of these topics that we're going to talk about, growth, housing, transportation, infrastructure. It just has implications across, across the board.
Can we see what the expectation is of why, what that 18% breaks down as? What, what is the 18% going to consist of? I mean, is it, it'll make a difference?
Yeah, I mean, these are projections that come from Weldon Cooper, and I don't know, Carolyn, if you can answer that question in more detail.
If it's all students, that's one thing, if it's professionals coming in or IT people.
Or retirees.
Right. I think the thing about Weldon Cooper is they were like 10,000 off when they predicted 2020, so you just-
All of us with a grain of salt.
It means we're growing, though.
Yeah.
To answer your question, though, Weldon Cooper does break their population projections down based on male versus female and age, and so that could be something that we flesh out a little bit more in the community profile, if you're interested.
Ageing under 21 and under is probably a student, maybe.
That, that's, that would be my best guess, but that's something that we could take a look at and put that explicitly in the plan to drive some more age-specific recommendations, especially for things like housing, transportation.
Because something's driving that 18%, I mean, they got the number somewhere. They didn't just say, hmm, you know, 18%. I mean, maybe they did, I mean.
There's a little, little bit more methodology behind that.
Just that goes, where's this? I'm looking for it on my computer and I can't find it.
The, this, these slides?
Yeah, what is this on there?
This is, this is a PowerPoint presentation that I put together just for the story session.
Oh, is it not?
No, no. We're not looking, we're not looking at the documents page by, page by page.
I don't want to read the fine print, but I can't.
That is in there somewhere, I saw it. I bet in the figure.
Yeah, the graphics are, the graphics are in the documents that you have in your packet, and this is the public workshop results map, which would be in the public engagement summary.
Page nine.
Yeah, page nine for the graphic, and then the demographic data is on page 12 of the community profile. Yeah, so it is a projection, right? And there is a methodology that Weldon Cooper uses, but it does have to be taken, taken with a, with a grain of salt. But even at 18%, that puts you in a higher category, so, you know, higher or lower, you're, the trend is that, that you're growing. And one of the things that we heard quite a bit, particularly in the focus group we had with the development community here in the city, is that there, you know, there's a demand for housing, and they're trying to keep up with that demand just for today. So how are we going to meet the demand for tomorrow? And a lot of what they're talking about was flexibility and changes to the zoning to allow for some more cost-efficient and effective, effective development. That growth, obviously, is going to happen. We don't know where it's going to happen, how it's going to happen, but there will be people who need housing, there will be people who, you know, need to shop for groceries and, and get to the grocery store, you know, car. And it has infrastructure implications, so, you know, water and sewer, infrastructure and solid waste, we heard, heard from a lot of folks about the, the need for, to up the improvements for those three infrastructure components. Obviously, Lynchburg is a very old city, so that affects infrastructure, it's, there's a lot of maintenance that goes into that, but if we're also planning for growth, that's new infrastructure that, that needs to be, needs to be planned for.
So there's some elements in, I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep interrupting.
No, no, I want you to, I want you to interrupt, yeah.
That 18% projected growth would have some influence on how we think about future housing. If you think about housing in this way, that's not many people's idea of the American dream to move and live in an apartment with 1,000 other people, they want houses. Then you view apartments as transitory things where people live in the city temporarily, but aren't stakeholders in the city, of which nearly half or over half right now are in that boat, and they're waiting for an opportunity to move to the counties. If you look right now, there's almost what, a two to one influx of people coming from the counties to work in the city versus those going from the city to work in the counties. And the lower two-thirds of the city has kind of suffered a lot of the density development in the past, which means traffic problems, which means crime problems, which means services issues, shore balls and police, which we do have. And the northern part of the city has a whole bunch of undeveloped private land that could be rezoned to the benefit of the landowners and be used, you know, we could put some quarters, transportation quarters in there, and develop all that as high-density housing, which would be probably the best use of that if we want to put in for housing in the future. But it's also the old money section of Lynchburg, in which case trying to develop that is going to be highly political. So how do we address these things as well?
Yeah, absolutely. And one of the things I like to say when we're working on comp plans, if money, politics, and personalities aren't, aren't a factor, what is the ideal and best scenario for the city? And that's obviously a very hard thing to do, but it's where we need, where we need to start and then incorporate those other realities. Yeah.
I guess, curiously, too, and I'm, I'm trying to like remember if what I'm about to say is true or not, because there's a lot of information in here. But if our, if our population is increasing, and I guess this is a problem that we need to talk about later, but I thought I saw in here that the demand for housing, or maybe it's just resident, I thought I saw it was decreasing. And so I guess a part of this is like, how much of this do we have to accept that we are a transient city?
What, what page are you referring to?
Well, it's within the, I'm, I'm currently on page eight, 16 of the, the profile of the, the community profile. I could, I'm pretty sure I read that, I'm, and I guess I'm just, because when I read these numbers, I'm like, oh, demand for housing should go up, but like, I mean, I don't know how we, I don't know what, yeah.
Look, we can prove that, but I don't, I don't think that was my impression at any point, that there was a decreasing need for residential housing.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can, we can, we can prove it. In fact, the, the next slide, one of the, one of the key takeaways, that there's pretty clearly a demand, whether it's perception or market-driven for additional housing of all types, across the spectrum. Excuse me.
Well, related to what you're saying, too, this is some things that we've discussed a little bit earlier. If, we kind of have to decide what kind of city we want to be. So I mean, if, if what I call transient housing, the high-density housing, if we build more and more of that, and we increase what I also call the non-stakeholders and the service users in the city, whereas if we build single-family houses, yes, we have less housing in the city, but we increase the demand for those houses in the city, which increases stakeholders living in the city, it decreases service- It decreases service usage and it increases the values of the properties of those who own those, which means the city becomes a more desirable place to live. When you cram a whole bunch of people into small spaces, you know, there's no reason we can't offload that to the counties and make the city a desirable place to live. Because if we don't start thinking like that, we're going to end up as a highly dense, transient living situation where everybody commutes into the city to work and leaves in the evening. And we're already headed that way. 38,000, I think the report says, commute into the city from the surrounding counties and only 20, half that.
But we already have an inherent problem with zero ability to develop land in the city.
Except in the northern part of the city, Lynchburg, a part which.
Which was your good and lost.
Yeah. But that's really where we would have to put it, if we were going to put it anywhere.
Yeah, and we'll, you know, as we, as we get into this in more detail, like, there'll be some more analysis to look at what is actually feasible. I do think what, one thing that, you know, housing costs the way they are, what we've heard is that, you know, the traditional single-family home is unattainable foremost.
Interest rates are part of that, too. They're probably 30% high.
Whether they're, you know, they're unattainable economically, there's also, there's a shifting culture, you know? People don't want to mow two, three acres. Yeah.
As you get older, right?
Yeah. So shifting, shifting what it means to what a single-family home means and might be, might be a way to address some of those issues.
That also might go back to your question about the growth, because, you know, college students don't want houses, right? And they're not going to buy them. Older, as people get older, a lot of people want to downsize and simplify. And that might be, those might be the areas that we're growing the most in. And then that does show that there would be more development that would be smaller or mixed use. And I know the counties are having a ton of apartment development right now. It's not where it needs to go. It's everywhere, so.
We just don't have room for it. And, yeah, you're exactly right. And that's why it's important, I think, to identify where that 18% projected growth is coming from. Because if it's students, it's one thing. But, but again, the city's limited land. I'm not sure we should view that as the city's obligation to provide housing for the student populations that the colleges are bringing in to generate money for the colleges. Liberty's got a multi-billion-dollar endowment. It's not like they don't have the means or the property to put up housing for their students. They do, you know? And the counties are not that far away. So the city, I know historically, is viewed, well, we've got to find someplace to put these students. No, we don't. They're going to come whether we do or not. What we need to do, and particularly, in my view, you sitting on this commission, is trying to make the city a more desirable place to live for those who want to stay and live here.
And what do you think would make the city more desirable?
Getting rid of some of the urban density thinking and start moving toward individual house and neighborhood thinking. And less maybe about planned unit development types like we have in Winters, which if you look over there, they've got a huge empty commercial problem over there. And the crime is increasing over there, when we hear from the police, you know? So Greenview has done maybe a little bit better. I'm not sure why, maybe because it's a lot of student population over there. So in my view, a lot of this centers around, again, what kind of city do we want to be? Do we want to be a city of transient people who live here until they're done college or have an opportunity to move to the county? Or do we want people who look at the city as a place they can come and buy a house, even if it's expensive? And that house is going to increase in value. You know, 100 years from now, these houses are going to still be worth something. I know, because I live in a 100, almost 100-year-old house. And it's worth way, way more than when I bought it. But these apartment complexes we're building in 50 years are going to be urban jungle. And you cannot get rid of them. You will never get rid of them.
So I want to, I want to move on. We've got a lot to cover. But I do want to point out the last two issues here, or themes, not issues, themes here. And one is to point about providing for a variety of age groups. I think we talked about senior housing over here. And a lot of what we heard through community engagement is, you know, people need housing, whatever type, whatever form that housing takes, they need it to be in a full-service neighborhood, a neighborhood where they can get to amenities, where they can get to a corner store, where they can get to, get to a cafe. And college students who generally don't have private transportation, that's going to be particularly important for them. And then the opposite end of the spectrum, seniors, who, you know, are maybe going to start phasing out of driving, also need those amenities. And we heard that kind of again across, across the spectrum. And then to your point about historic character, again, a lot of, a lot of people take pride in the historic character of the city. So working to embrace that as an asset, both for growth and investment. But I think also the nuance here is as kind of a template for the kinds of neighborhoods that can, we should be looking at developing in the city.
I mean, I know there's some non-traditional, like, ways to think about some of the problems that you pose related to senior living and easy walkability. And I do, I'm curious, like, there's a, there's a, not to get off track, and I'll pause after this, but like, there's a Facebook page that I love to follow, Small Towns, something or another, but they, they're always talking about new ways to think about your city that it seems so, so non-traditional. And I love every aspect of it. It is about walkability, and it is about thinking about blighted places and turning them into maybe even more of a business-use space. You know, smaller, the things you might find in the community market, or something, something to that effect. I wish I knew the name of the page, but I mean, it's.
Is it Strong Towns? Strong Towns?
That's what it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So, anyway, as you were posing some of those challenges, I was just thinking about some non-traditional ways to maybe solve some of those challenges.
Other thoughts here? We've talked a lot about other things that we're going to come back to. Any last thoughts here, Corinna? So yes, we talked a fair bit about, about housing already. I'll say one of the things we heard pretty strongly throughout the survey, and really throughout all conversations we've had with folks, is that one of the highest-valued assets of the city is the lowest cost of living. 41% of survey respondents ranked that as the top three for assets for the city of Lynchburg. But there's still 32% of the population or households are considered cost burden, which is they're spending 30% or more of their income on housing. And that's compared to 27.8% statewide. And that's, that's an issue, housing, and that is an issue everywhere. I will say that some of that can be accounted for, the fact that Lynchburg actually has a higher number of folks living at or below the poverty line, which again, could be accounted for through college students. But whether they're college students or whether they're households that are living below the poverty line, the fact is that there is a housing cost issue. And we saw some of that anecdotally in the survey as well. Folks who were responding to the survey were living in areas not near, not near the university and not near some of the lower-income neighborhoods. So it's an issue across economic, the economic spectrum. And then, of course, a large portion, this 22% there of the housing stock predates 1939, which is great for that historic character, the fabric of the community. But a lot of those structures are hard to maintain. Old buildings are expensive and hard to maintain, and you see that in the deteriorated structure. And 68, 61%, as you see there, survey respondents feel that blight is new in the city. I will say that's not just residential blight, it's blight across all use types. And so cost of, cost of housing, age of housing, population growth, all of those are coming together to create a pressing need for additional housing of all types. There's a little snapshot of one of the survey question results there. It's kind of hard to read. But it's, the 64%, that top green bar, is people want to see, of housing types, people want to see rehab and repair of existing homes. That's a, that's a key priority for the community. 58% a single family. And we've already talked about that. That could be a different kind of single, single family. But then down at the bottom, townhomes at 35%. So again, some acknowledgement that there are some, some different avenues to ownership and to housing in the community. Just kind of anecdotally, the 55% and 43%, the first is housing for seniors or people with disabilities, and then the light blue 43% is transitional or supportive housing. I think we've talked a little bit about senior housing, but this, you know, what we learned later in focus groups and might be, might be what is reflected in these survey results is the closing of the homeless shelter recently, I think brought to, brought to the forefront some, some issues for, for housing for, for folks in need of transitional or other supportive assistance.
All right, what are the percentages, that's how many people have filled out the survey that thought those were the issues?
Yes, yeah. So this was a ranking question. What kind of housing would you like to see in the city? 64% of respondents, 58%, 55%, they want those kinds of, those kinds of housing. And there are more, there were more options than that. Those were just the top five. And then that last one, again, we, we talked about, you know, creating neighborhoods with easy access to neighborhood amenities to plan for all, all kinds of people, all kinds of households. Additional thoughts about housing? Other issues that you've seen that maybe aren't captured here, things we need to be considering? Something you really agree with or disagree with?
I mean, I think the rehab and repair, I mean, I've heard city council talk about how difficult it is to actually do that. So it's good to hear that maybe some of that's on the table.
I think the city recently started, I talked to Tom about this a couple of years ago, the city finally, I think, started selling off some of their blighted properties. And he had talked about that, said, look, the city has over 600 properties that are just sitting in the city's portfolio. So what are they doing with it? They're not collecting taxes on them, they're not getting developed, they're just sitting there as urban blight, sell these things. And I know, I think this last year, they started auction-hawking off some of them. So I don't know where that's going to go. The other question I had is, in this list, how many people, kind of, I keep beating this horse here. I assume multifamily, high-density apartment-type housing was included in the list of housing, but it doesn't show up on the list of those who were looking for more of that.
What about responses? So.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. So apartments or condos, and then university student housing were two separate options. For apartments or condos, that number was just shy of 25% who would support it as a priority. And then for college student housing, that was around 12%.
So 25% of Lynchburg residents.
Survey respondents.
Survey respondents want more of what is often proposed as the solution to the housing problem in cities nowadays, I guess is my.
I guess one thing I would, a question I would pose, and it's obviously not anything we would have to answer today, but something, something to think about is, once we do get the breakdown from Weldon Cooper, where they think what age brackets will grow, is that, you know, realizing that even if that data does indicate that it'll be mostly college students, if, if they're coming regardless and they are seeking those apartment or university-type, what would be considered traditional university-type housing, multifamily, and they are grabbing those units, that does have potential to displace a long-term Lynchburg resident. Because there are long-term Lynchburg residents that, that live in apartments. People that have lived here their entire lives aren't homeowners, for whatever reason.
And the illegals are another problem, which we won't even get into, because how many, the illegals, I know there's the federal government putting them up in some of these nice apartment complexes around town. So I've got a friend who lives next door to them, and they come in, they use all the washing machines and dryers to do for their other illegal friends. And there's a, I mean, it's the number one issue in America right now politically, but yeah, Lynchburg's got a lot of illegals here.
The townhomes that are being built on Eastville Road right now, that, that are going up, incredible. Heritage court, yeah. There are so many of them that are being purchased by Liberty parents for their kids. So it's, that is, I mean, it's, it is happening.
But they are owned at least.
No, no, they're just not necessarily stakeholders.
That's true.
You know, they're, they're just doing it for.
Yeah, that's common.
Right, which I guess, you know, as Liberty grows and gets bigger, which they are going to, you know, we're, we're going to become more and more like a college town. And that's, I mean, that's got goods and, you know, I mean, pluses and minuses, right?
Liberty sits on the edge of Campbell County, and a whole bunch of undeveloped property Liberty owns. I know, I mean, if they're, if they're going to keep bringing in students, they have the ability to house these students and, and build these things. And as I pointed out a few minutes ago, that these students come in, it's not we don't want them, I'm a Liberty grad, I appreciate Liberty and what it does and its contribution to the community, but we can't absorb like a sponge all the students that they want to bring in, because these students are paying Liberty, they're not paying the city. You know, they're not, yeah, they're contributing some economics to the city by buying and patronizing businesses around here. But as far as long-term interest in what happens in our city, what happens to the crime in our city, what happens to who gets elected in our city, they have no stake in that, apart from the couple of years, four years that they're here. The counties can't absorb these things. If, if we move toward building more houses that maybe are the type that wouldn't be purchased for rentals, like fewer town, I know we just approved for recommendation, you know, city council townhouses not that long ago. But if we used some of the space we've got now to zone for single-family houses, yeah, we're going to be able to house fewer people. But we're surrounded by all these counties with massive land. They have the ability to absorb this. Why can't they? Why does the city have to absorb all this? We don't. And we can become more livable by putting more ownership, more single-family houses in the spaces that we have, or businesses.
Well, I guess if you, if you really wanted to plan it out, city would do the best and no residents, you know what I mean? Because it would just have tax revenue, and we would have to worry about schools. So I think that maybe, do we have benchmarks? Like, if we look at Harrisonburg as a good benchmark, JMU, similar size, a little bit bigger than Liberty, what they do there, what they've done in, like, other, other towns. Greendale, North Carolina is a great benchmark or Johnson City. And maybe see how it's working there, because I think that's where we get better results. Those are, Greendale and Johnson City are probably the two best benchmarks there are. And Lynchburg's used them before in some of their research. And, you know, see what they've done with their colleges. And of course, they're not, they're not the city-county divide there. But I don't think we, we're going to get anywhere trying to figure out how to solve the kind of housing we have in this first chapter, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. Look at some case studies, some more communities. Other thoughts about housing, neighborhoods?
I might just echo something Dave said. You know, and I'm not sure how people define blight, because blight might be defined a lot of different ways. To me, an empty building that's been sitting for a long time is blight. You know, if you go to vibrant cities, they don't have empty buildings sitting. And that, I just say, that goes back to something you said, Dave. Like, there are some unique things that we don't include in our plan, that would be nice to see, that might meet some of these needs. You know, not, they're not single-family, but they're also not day complexes that can use spaces that really are outdated for their.
Yes, that's a good point, because you can use old existing spaces for that kind of thing.
Yeah, and that's, and we heard that in public engagement. Yeah, that we, we heard quite a bit about underutilized areas, strategic infill and redevelopment. And I think that goes to that, you know, that notion of blight. What, you know, what is blight? I think a lot of people see an empty shopping center and they're like, it's blighted. It's, maybe it's not blighted, but certainly underutilized. So I think there are some, there are some creative ways we can think about those old outdated spaces.
And I would, I mean, just to be clear, I would add in, like, residential housing as a component, of how we might think about that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, like, I went to Charlotte, which I hadn't been in ever, but went into this older section of Charlotte. And they, they are taking, you know, a really small section where there might be one or two houses there, and they're turning it into like a teeny-tiny little cul-de-sac with these massive, like, four-story, single-family homes.
Mini-mansions.
Yeah, but I mean, there, it's like, where we would have had two houses, there might be five sitting in there.
Well, those people are just spending $350,000 to buy the house, to tear the house down, and then spending 1.6 million to rebuild. Like, they.
But I meant, but they're taking a bigger lot and then building something smaller and which, you know, I don't know what that means for, I know the city has their.
and which, you know, I don't know what that means for, and the city has their, the rules and regs for, you know, having so much road frontage and all that stuff. But anyway, it's, again, it's just thinking about creative ways to put in more single-family homes in a smaller area.
Because that touches on what you were saying about people who may wanna live in the city, but they don't want all the lawn mowing and all that sort of thing, but they want a nice house, and they don't mind living in something like sections of Winters that are five feet away from each other, you know, in the, I guess, the original thinking, leave it to Beaver neighborhood, we can, you're fifteen feet off the sidewalk, and houses are five feet apart, you know, and either four hundred thousand dollar houses.
Just leave it to Beaver. You know, it might tie to infrastructure too. You know, I know in Dilworth, I think that's a town, one of the communities in Charlotte, that the city years ago went in and redid the infrastructure in old neighborhoods, and that encouraged people to actually then step in and buy, like, all right, this is a little bit better now, we've got, like, underground utilities, better lights, new roads, curves, some of our inner-city roads don't even have curves still, you know? So that's one of the ways infrastructure can help build some of that, get through some of that.
Yeah, I think Kentsey made a good point, that is an interesting observation, because you can take parcels that otherwise might be considered too small to do anything other than put a multifamily unit on, and instead, they might go for something far better in terms of people, you know, okay, you don't get as many units, which means the landowner doesn't make a million dollars a year off it, but you get landowners in there, the land is used, and it's used in a positive, attractive way that actually adds some stakeholder value to the city.
So we have to change our land use guidelines, our zoning guidelines for that? I know, like, the PUDs, you have really small yards, but right now, that's something that we're, we're gonna have to address in this plan, right? Like, the ability to use land, smaller pieces of land?
That could absolutely be a recommendation, um, and, you know, Catherine actually had on this slide, you know, potentially smaller lot sizes, and my comment to her was, well, we might look at other, other ways to change zoning too. So we took it out because it maybe felt too specific at this point. But, you know, as we get into land use and housing and, uh, and those sort of topic areas, it's definitely something we'll, we'll, we'll be talking about. You know, we've also had a couple of neighborhood plans now, um, one in progress, and the, the Darrington neighborhood plan that also talked about, uh, row homes, which is basically townhomes on a smaller, uh, with a slightly different setup. You know, townhomes are typically like a, a two-acre, well, by zoning, they have to be a two-acre parcel, um, they typically are oriented toward the parking lot. It, there's a lot more, I don't wanna say wasted space, but a row ha, uh, row homes can be like a compact version of that, and we actually have a lot of examples of that in downtown and surrounding historic neighborhoods already, which are actually considered non-conforming, because our current zoning doesn't allow it. So that's, that's another example of a way we might look at zoning too. And that, that would be a homeownership opportunity, it's a single-family attached. But, yeah, there's, there's a number of ways we can look at zoning to, to densify and make development more feasible, uh, make it more affordable, that sort of thing.
Can we go on to mobility, connectivity? Key themes here, uh, obviously, safety and efficiency are a top of the vehicular transportation network, um, are a top priority for the community. Lynchburg has some high-volume roadways, twenty-nine and, and four-sixty. Some of those interchanges and intersections are functionally updated and would benefit from spot improvements. The map, uh, it says there's, these are crash clusters, and the state is from 2020, I believe, is that right? Yeah, 2020. So you can just see where those, where those crashes are clustered in, in the city. So, you know, while huge amenity, these are statewide corridors, they bring a lot of traffic through the city, um, they, they also provide, have safety, safety concerns associated with them. Another great amenity is regional transportation network, rail service. That's a great amenity that the city has, provides valuable transportation alternatives for commuters, college students. And then we heard some, um, desire to see the, you know, better carriers and transport, so that also contributes to economic activity in the city. So a lot of, a lot of assets in terms of transportation, the connectivity network for the city. The pedestrian bicycle trail network, also, if you look at, you know, miles of trail, sidewalk, bikes, there's, there's a lot in the city, but not very well-connected. We heard that pretty consistently, that it's hard to use it to get from point A to point, point B, or you have to drive somewhere to then, then use the bike network. So if we wanna decrease, um, you know, safety incidents, if we wanna increase, you know, alternative transportation and decrease vehicular use, we've gotta find a way to better connect that, better connect sidewalks and bike trails and bike lanes and trails. Any additional thoughts or comments on this, this topic?
Where's that, um, slide? Where's that map?
That map is in the community profile page.
Page...
One second, and I'll pull it up.
Page thirty-three.
The Central Virginia Planning District just did a, or it's going on now, a commuter need survey, I don't know if you guys are getting any of those data. I just did it, I just filled it out the other day. But it's asking a lot of these same questions, and so that might be a good source of input.
Yeah, and I, I didn't say at the beginning, but the, um, the community profile, like, this is first blush, right? As we get into drafting, we will discover new data sources, you know, alternate data sources, so it will be updated and it's gonna be a living document throughout the drafting phase.
So you're saying it'll just get worse and worse?
More and more to read. More and more homework.
All right, that's, um, infrastructure and facilities is, is next. And a lot, you know, again, we, a lot of this, we, we've talked about. One interesting tidbit, and I, we talked a little bit about this, when we're talking about, you know, making investments in infrastructure so we can get the kinds of, kinds of housing we need. In the economic development focus group, um, there's a pretty strong consensus that public investment in infrastructure, as well as, you know, incomplete streets, so providing for sidewalks and other, um, other amenities, and then public art, the kind of this quality-of-life amenities are really drivers for creating favorable conditions to attract private investment, to attract the businesses that are gonna be looking at Lynchburg and saying, do they have the quality of life that our employees want? And so that was pretty loud, loud and clear out of that focus group. Obviously, public school facilities, the facilities themselves need improvement to enhance learning environment, and then, you know, goes without saying, continue to prioritize alternative transportation and access to them. And then completing the downtown revitalization work, including, you know, the investment in new public spaces like the amphitheater. These public spaces, again, are quality-of-life drivers that people are gonna be looking at if they wanna locate here, um, they're gonna be drivers for additional, additional economic development. And they're also great spaces for social cohesion, for bringing people together, for helping to create that, you know, that we love Lynchburg feeling. Yeah, thoughts or additional things to think about in terms of infrastructure, public facilities? You know, mobility and the transportation network and infrastructure networks, networks are pretty cut and dry. It's like, these, these are things that need, need to be done. We're gonna have to continue to do them, do them in an ongoing way.
Public schools here are, I don't know if it's symptomatic of other areas or if it's just, I'm pretty sure it's not unique here. We, we've lost twenty-five to forty percent of students who live here. We're talking about closing two schools. Well, of course, now they're in the middle of a big battle, frankly, one of those open. Public schools are, they also can barely, if at all, meet state standards for minimum education requirements. So as far as using the schools, improving school facilities to enhance the learning environment, that's gonna be its own thing.
I would argue we keep that very shallow. We've got enough folks here diving into that topic. They don't need a third group getting involved.
Yeah, and, you know, there's only so much a councilman can do to address education anyway. We're talking about spending for facilities, but that's about...
But it was, it was definitely...
It was...
A topic of concern or response.
No, I'm not downplaying it, I'm just saying, there are two very powerful groups tackling that right now.
Yep.
They don't need to hear from us.
Yep. Understood. Okay, let's move on to economic development. So what we heard throughout engagement is that people feel Lynchburg does a pretty good job of supporting businesses and entrepreneurship, but there was some acknowledgement that there is need for additional jobs training for those trades and skilled laborers for that, that segment of the, of the workforce. We heard, you know, pretty consistent, and this is, comes back to the, you know, all of these issues are intertwined and overlapped, but investment in housing and neighborhoods, that's gonna, you know, that's gonna translate to investment, economic vitality, you know? Companies are looking to locate here, do they have the kind of housing, the kind of neighborhoods that their, their, their employees want? The same for the, for the school system, so improvements there are gonna have long-term economic and social benefits for the city. What's, so I, interesting, the projected growth by industry. Obviously, education and healthcare are major industries here in the, in the city, and they're projected to grow, you know, healthcare at kind of a steady rate, education a little bit more, but this thirty-eight percent projected growth for arts, entertainment, and recreation is a really interesting data point to think about, um, how to, how to leverage that and how to make the, make the most of that for economic development in the city.
So a quiet question, does that, does this refer to the surveys sent out? I mean, does, or reflection of the surveys that were sent out? Because that would...
This is, this is data, this is from the community profile.
Do you know what page that's on, Caroline?
The projected growth by industry?
Yeah, arts and entertainment, almost a forty percent growth.
That's from the Virginia Employment Commission, and I'm not sure the methodology behind those numbers.
Yeah, but you gotta remember too, if you had a hundred people and you had thirty-eight, it's thirty-eight percent. So it's not, it's not like, I mean, these are, these could be small numbers.
Well, I mean, again, this isn't responding, that's, that's where the projected growth is.
Yeah, it's still small.
Right, but two to four is a hundred percent growth, right?
Yeah, I'm saying, it's not, it's not, that's... We're starting at small. Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, you know, damn applies to statistics, right? It could be, it could be anything, but, again, what we, you know, what we heard through community engagement is that the arts, culture, and recreation environment here is a source of pride for the community, and it's something that, that is, can, can be better leveraged. And if it's already projected as a, as a growth industry through the Employment Commission, then it's, it's something to look at in a little bit more detail.
Yeah, I think that, um, I think that's, with the quality of life, when you get to economic development, there's such an important tie. You know, when, but some people might remember that there was a time we recruited businesses because of our schools, and that's how we recruited. Because would be one of the things he would tout. And now, I think, if you have a growing arts and entertainment community and quality of life in outdoor activities, that's something that Marjette can really utilize.
Yeah, Marjette would be, I mean, I'm certainly not making a point we shouldn't. I'm just, I'm surprised by the high number of projected growth.
Yeah, there, um, I don't know if you're familiar with Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs? Yeah, you know, and so the fact that you, you have this is, which is great, great for the city. The fact that there's growth potential is, is even better. Other things that we should be considering as we're diving into economic development topics?
I just, you hear about the need for, I'm not sure if the right term, landing pads for large industries, is that the right term? Oh, good developed space, yeah.
Pad-ready sites?
Pad-ready sites, yeah. Which is, you know, it fits into one of these components.
That was something I did during the focus group.
You know, compared to like, uh, out in Bedford, they've got a lot set up, the, uh...
That's like what they, what you're talking about, like Amazon warehouse, like distribution or whatever?
Amherst is developing one, that's one of the things I talked to one of the council members about, and, and I said, you know, I think it's useful to look at Danville and Amherst over the next couple of years and see how their film sites have paid out, because some people say they don't work.
Industrial parks.
Yeah, industrial, yeah, developed sites, shell buildings.
Enterprise things.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking of the one out in Bedford on four-sixty with the mountain bike trails. It's taken a while, but it is starting to fill in.
Still pretty good for mountain bike.
It's very good for mountain bike trails, it's, it brings me off now.
It's entertainment, that's part of the head, part of the...
That's golf, sorry. But that, you know, but that term, we don't, I don't, we don't really reference it much internally, and I don't know whether that's a topic to, to bring up at some point.
Marjette will have that.
Yeah, it was something that came up in the focus group for economic development.
Okay.
Okay. The last, um, topic here is the environmental and community health grouping, and, um, this is where we, you know, we heard a lot about the James. James is a major asset for the city, but disconnected, so there's an opportunity to increase socialization, recreation, and tourism around, around the James. Green infrastructure, so both parks, both open spaces, um, natural spaces, they provide ecological services that can, you know, store water management, reduce demand on traditional infrastructure, and there are also some proven community health benefits, including cleaner air and promoting more active and physically healthy residents. And we've heard a fair bit of that throughout, throughout workshops and public engagement, that people really wanna, you know, there's a great tree canopy in the city, let's, let's keep up, keep up the work there. And then this, the third, we'll let down here, is, if you, in the community profile, and Caroline can find the page number, Lynchburg's actually seen an overall decline in crime incidents. So the twenty-twenty-two violent crime was down by fourteen percent, and crime overall by eighteen percent. But recent violent crimes have created, um, a perception, and, you know, rightly so, safety concerns for the city. So what can, what can we do to, to address these? And there, you know, there are a lot of ways we can address it obliquely through the built landscape, which, you know, at its heart, the comprehensive plan is a, is a, is a plan for the physical development of, of the city. So, you know, clearly, safety remains a top concern for residents, despite what the data is telling us.
Just a quick note on that, like, in a more tangible way, um, I recently sat with Lynchburg Police Department, being someone in the restaurant community, and, you know, I don't know how planning thinks about this kind of stuff, but like, one of the real issues related to crime is like the, where the police literally feel like their hands are tied, is that the, um, the parking lots around some of these restaurants that seem to be the, the cultivators of, of this kind of crime, they can't, they can't touch those properties, the property, they can't, they can't touch the, the parking lot. And, you know, we do have a lot of private parking lots in the city, and, um, I don't know how that impacts us down the line in terms of thinking about development, but that is a real challenge and impediment to safety.
You mean, they can't touch them until somebody shoots somebody?
It's private property.
But, but after somebody gets shot?
Oh, yeah, of course, but, but, so the police can't like, you know, patrol a, a parking lot where people might be tailgating at two-thirty in the morning?
So they let them go, just drive by and...
Mm-hmm.
So my understanding is that if the owner authorizes LPD to do so...
Of the parking lot.
They could.
But the incentives there are, you know, it, it, it's, it's, I've never, well, not never, it seems to be a very difficult subject to solve.
Because of just lack of willingness from, from the owners, maybe?
I think you could chalk it up to that, maybe something else, but, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like there, there's an education opportunity there, an education opportunity. opportunity.
I mean, it's a real challenge. I mean, it's almost like there's like this barrier, literal barrier, that is between, you know, you've got the restaurant that's cultivating this, this scene, that you gotta deal with that in and of itself. And then literally across the street, you've got these private parking spots that you can literally see what's going on, and you can't do anything about it. But that has to be paid for or probably endorsed by the owner. So anyway.
So the last theme that we've put on the screen here is that Lynchburg has a plethora of nonprofits and social service organizations that serve in these residence. But we heard pretty, pretty overwhelmingly, through our focus groups and other conversations, that there really needs to be a targeted effort to coordinate both among those private entities, but also public-private partnerships to improve the efficiency and ability of those organizations to deliver services and reduce redundancies, that sort of thing.
Does the city have a point person who handles that kind of thing?
The, like neighborhood watch type stuff?
No, who works with some of the
Oh, sorry, nonprofits. I thought you were going back to
Yeah, to coordinate community benefit and
So I think they're doing that a lot on their own. I, I don't wanna speak to social services and Department of Human Services, 'cause I don't know their, what their interaction with those nonprofits is. I would assume it's there. But just in the focus group with the nonprofits themselves, I mean, they, they sounded like they were really on it about, you know, this is our function, this is their function, we call them when they need us, and, and vice versa. So it seems like they are, they're coordinating well, at least amongst themselves.
So there's no need for a city person necessarily?
Oh, well, not, not saying that. And they may already be doing that. I'm not, I can't speak to that. My feeling is that they already are doing that, but I can't say for sure.
I think what we heard was that there were, there are a lot of organizations providing a lot of services, but there is some, some overlap. They're going after, you know, the same pots of money. And, you know, they're providing services that the city isn't providing. And just, you know, making it clear where people go to get these services. It's just, there are a lot of, a lot of fingers and a lot of cooks in the kitchen. So coordinating and just making it clear where and how people can access these services.
We're a city of churches too, and I know a lot of churches have outreaches like this too.
And one thing we heard, I forget who, she, she used to work for, she had worked for the city of Charlottesville. The city of Charlottesville had a point person, who basically, we, you know, no, we don't provide that service, but you can find it here. So that was something that we were hearing. Okay, that is the end of our, our theme buckets. But I don't wanna I don't wanna limit us to just these topics. So if there's something else that you all would like to discuss, or you feel like wasn't captured here, then open the, open the floor for that.
If you wanna go back to the, I guess, the table of contents or whatever.
Yep.
Can you send us these?
Yes, yes, I will. This one?
Yeah. This is not answering your question, but as we move forward, I would find it helpful. As, when we get to a meeting, I did, I, we were told this stuff was here. I did not look at it before the meeting. It, it would be just to get on our backs and say, hey, this is what we're covering at this upcoming meeting. Here are the resources, look at them ahead of time.
This is your homework.
Yes, or pre, pre-class homework. I think we're all, I mean, we're planning commissioners, that's what we do. We're all pretty good about looking at things ahead of time. And in this case, that wasn't a big deal, but I did not look at any of this, except what we had been talking about generally before. And as we start getting more and more documents building up on that page, again, before meetings specifically, this is what we're tackling, I would welcome that kind of an email a week or two ahead of time. Or if there's, if there's glaring issues that you know need to be thought about, put them in there. Get us, get us thinking about them.
Yeah, and as we move forward, we'll be, we will, so today we had documents, but we were talking more generally.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
But as we, as we go forward, we will actually have documents that we are, we're working on together. So we can, if there, we'll put, we'll make sure to put together agendas that Rachel, Rachel can send out to you. And if, like you said, if there's specific issues or topics or questions we have, we can put that in the agenda.
Yeah, I like the way it's laid out with those three larger categories. And then the outline here, I think it looks, I mean, it's a great structure for us to tackle.
One thing that I, I'm just looking at this list now, I don't think I talked about it at the beginning. So under chapter two, so chapter two, I think we'll probably come together at the end of the, the, the planning process. But one thing that's listed here is planning catalyst projects. And we had, we bounced this idea around internally. But the idea that, you know, underneath each of these topics, there are gonna be specific strategies and projects. But as we're going through the drafting phase, are there particular projects that we can identify, that you all can identify as, as a group, that would catalyze change within, within these, within these topics? So, you know, maybe three, four, five catalyst projects float to the top, and we highlight those in, in chapter two of, of the document. So that might be something that we, that we develop as we go, go through this process together.
So would an example of that be, that topic you brought up, Kenzie, with downtown, not zone for commercial on the first floor, that we felt needed to be addressed?
Yeah.
It's all residential, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, a, a policy recommendation change could be, could fit into that.
Yeah.
Yeah, when, um, the, when I, we asked the planning department to look into the, the way that the downtown area was envisioned back in, you know, fifteen, ten years ago about having commercial spaces in the, on the main level, and then having, you know, and, but there's no zoning that supports that vision.
Right, but we, yeah, we did talk about this, but not necessarily just commercial. Probably needs to be, I would argue, more specific than that.
No, I know, but we just discussed
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was no, never any zoning change to
Right.
to support the, the, the recommendation and, and the adopt, the adoptive plan that the council, that council adopted. But then we never, we never changed any of the zoning to support it.
You could just buy a building and put apartments on every floor.
Right.
Is the point.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, that would be an example of a catalyst project.
Yeah, it could be.
Or how do we incentivize R1?
I was gonna say
Or make R1 more valuable, more appealing.
Right.
That's a big topic.
That would be huge.
More rural developments kind of fix, or at least address that with the planned units out there. I mean, I don't really plan either development, Windhurst and Greenview. Because those actually do follow that line, don't they? Are they exceptions?
Cornerstone.
Yeah, cornerstone.
That makes use on some of those.
So what I think Commissioner Peralta was referring to is that, you know, Planning Commission had directed staff to explore a zoning update, because right now, in downtown, there is no, um, there's no requirement for any sort of active or commercial ground floor use. And that was a recommendation of the downtown twenty forty master plan. And when I say commercial, it could be office, it could be multiple, and not necessarily just retail or restaurant. But that was something that was a recommendation from the commission to staff, which we are still in the process of looking at. We're a little busy right now with, with comp plan things, and we are a little bit shorthanded, but that is still on our radar. And so, yes, that would be an example of, you know, if planning commission felt like that's something that was rising to the top, as important in the comp plan, that, an example of something you could highlight as a catalyst.
And I think revisiting R1 is a big one. How do we, how do we make that more attractive?
Right.
It's this whole, that zoning, I, I think that's the catalyst. It's like, there's several zoning issues that should probably be addressed.
You know, of course, running that changing building requirements to conform to what you were talking about earlier. That, that could be
To be able to build
Yeah, on smaller lots.
Three, three or four, single-family homes on a lot that would only allow
Right.
one or two, you know. Another catalyst to, I mean, just, could be, you know, an infrastructure improvement in a certain neighborhood that would, that would
Yeah.
really drive people to that neighborhood that the neighborhood wasn't driving people before, you know. So some, something like that could be really cool, you know. Could be in a different neighborhood.
And that's where I think us looking at that interactive feedback map, where people put in their ideas, if there's a lot that comes to the surface
Yep.
in a region, we can use that as a idea stimulator or something. Again, I haven't spent time looking at that like I should, but that, that would maybe generate some. And I, and I think you guys have done a good job of summarizing general input from that map. But we could look at that at some point.
We just need to bring up Rachel, the U.S. National Whitewater Center here.
It's on the, it's on the table.
Yeah, that's right.
That would be a catalyst project.
Yes, it's on the table. We've got Dan there.
Got water, it's had water.
It just, I mean, we need, we need a checkbook deep pockets.
Well, that, obviously, the
Going up in Danville.
Catalyst gets some of this.
The amphitheater is already underway, but that, I mean, having that maybe being, being completed at the time that this plan rolls out could also be a catalyst in itself.
Absolutely. And there's no harm in building into easy wins.
Right, right, for sure.
Yeah. Well, and it doesn't really address access to the river, but it's part of that. And that was one of your top bullets. You know, it's, it's, we're not gonna solve the railroad track problem.
We're not. We don't even know how we get around that.
We have, we already have the plan for that. The hope is just move the road.
I thought it was just move the railroad, the single, the old Norvet cluster.
Embar's County is gonna win this one.
You don't have to move the railroad. You just move Concord Turnpike behind those buildings.
Oh.
And then you have river access.
I know.
Oh, I was talking about like
But not right, not right in downtown.
The railroad that goes through the parking lot and everything. I thought there was plenty to mine though.
The concession stand that's being built for the amphitheater. Make it tall enough where you can put a bridge across.
Yeah, I was gonna say a bridge, like, I mean, that would be
You have to get railroad approval.
Well, they're hard, they're hard to deal with.
Yeah.
I mean, Liberty got it with the, the one where it runs rail.
They did.
We don't know with that too. I think railroads are almost quasi-government.
Well, I'm just, I mean, look, look, look.
But my point is
We're thinking, we're, yeah, but my point is Bringing story here, there's no no's.
Amphitheater.
You guys are really coming alive here at the end.
Yeah, well, it's the end, we're excited.
I think you've just written the catalyst projects portion of the plans.
My catalyst project is find money. 'Cause you gotta pay for it all.
We've already got the infrastructure for the bridge
Here we're gonna
Under the fiberglass bridge.
Yes.
It's built to have a pedestrian bridge under there, but
Yeah, I thought we had money for that too.
It's, it'd have to be federal money, I think.
Yeah.
Well, I think we'll get the zip line. The zip line. I'm really wanting the zip line.
I mean, you've got a canopy, like, right when, I mean, the way we're starting to go.
Leland Melon will pay for Well, there is one thing I think that I saw some movement on, that's pedestrian access across the John Lynch Bridge. I read something about that in the news.
Oh, that's in the news.
Yeah. Something in that, it was in the ECT or the newspaper. There was something about, like, try to move forward on that, which I think is great.
Yeah, so that project is in design right now. And so my understanding of that is it's the permanent fix to the terrible speed bump thing.
Yeah. And why does it take two years to replace?
The temporary, well, because of the railroad. And, uh, so you, you have to get special permits, I think, to work over both the river and the roads. I don't, I don't know all about it, so don't take me in my word. But there's a bridge joint repair project. And as part of that, at least the last I saw it, did have a pedestrian access on, on the bridge.
That's, that's speed bump testing?
No. No, no, the project, the, the main project is to do the permanent repair to those, those speed bump things. But also, at the same time, hopefully do the pedestrian if budget allows.
The joint's got a big gap or something. And so
What's it say?
It's, it's on the
It's on the bridge.
Coming in from Madison Heights.
Some people just
John Lynch Bridge.
That's all, that's what you do.
Go around it without slowing down.
No, uh, which way am I?
Siteless.
Fifth Street.
Okay. And if you hit that thing one time with any speed, you'll never go over it again. You'll drive around like everyone else.
All right, well, I think we wrapped up. This was great conversation. Next steps. I'm returning the comments you have on chapter one, this draft of the profile and the public engagement summary by this time next week. And you can send that to Rachel, and she'll send it on to us. We will be working on drafting chapters, Housing and Economy, and then we will see you all back here July eleventh.
And do we have a meeting on the eighth too?
We do not. No meeting next week.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, should we take a motion to adjourn?
We should. We shall.
Uh, yeah.
I make the motion.
All right. We're all approved.
All right, I have new business. Thank you.
Hey, Rachel, any updates on the hotel? Which one? The Indigo Hotel?